Twenty twenty four to order at seven oh one. And start off with the roll call. Steve Hakinen, Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street, Trowbridge Park.
Eric Powers, Staff Planner.
Approval of the agenda.
Move to prove the agenda.
I do have one addition under correspondence. Number eight B would be the Marquette County Intergovernmental Housing Task Force Target Market Analysis.
Do you submit?
Yep, okay.
With the amendment suggested by Mr. Powers, move to approve the agenda.
Second that. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes from the previous meeting on May eighth, twenty twenty four.
Move to approve the minutes from the prior meeting of May eighth, twenty twenty four.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward right now before any agenda items, welcome to do so. Seeing no one, we will move on to new business. Six A, special use permit, public hearing, zero six, one, two, two, four, dash, one. Propose short-term rental land used to be located on property located within the urban residential zoning district. Address is twenty-six, fifty-two Moran Street. Parcel tax ID is five, two, zero, eight, three, seven, zero, one, one, five, zero, zero. Applicant is Heather Holmstrom, twenty-six, fifty-two Moran Street in Marquette. Eric.
Yep, so staff has received a complete application for a short-term rental, special land use at two, six, five, two Moran Street, which is right around the corner here. The subject parcel is located in the urban residential zone district, shown on the map by a admittedly a little small blue star. You do see that there is DED, Development District Zoning, and then the red shaded area is general business zoning along US forty-one. Surrounding zoning districts of the parcel do include all urban residential zoning. Neighbors within three hundred feet of the subject property have been notified. There's an overview on the left-hand side of the property from Fetch GIS. And then the applicant's narrative is on the right, which is also included in your packet. Fees for the application have been paid. Additional information is in your packet, and the applicant was made aware of the potential property tax implications. Staff does not note, note any impediments to approval of their request pending any comment tonight. And that is all that I have on this unless there are any specific questions.
Yeah, I have one question for you. We've had a couple of issues with the Mining Journal getting it too late or not publishing it. We have no issues this time. We don't have to have Miss Holmstrom go through this a second time, do we?
No issues this time.
All right, good.
They had, as, as we've said, they've had some turnover there, and we seem to have a kind of established relationship now as far as that process.
Yeah, and I'm, and I meant to ask you as well, a lot of times we'll schedule the, the meeting like, you know, a month from when we schedule it. And usually it's twenty-eight days. How does the Mining Journal get that in thirty-eight days when we schedule a meeting twenty-eight days from when we set, set the meeting? You know, we're, we're, it seems like we're cutting it awful close sometimes.
Well, the notification requirement is fifteen days.
Fifteen days, okay, okay. I thought it was thirty, my, my bad.
So that is the reason why we can't, and I explain this to every applicant, why we can't do the request to schedule, and then the actual public hearing on back-to-back planning.
Because it's fourteen days.
Those are only fourteen days apart.
I got you, all right, thank you.
And I actually would note a couple of other things, I'm sorry. There is a survey of the property, which again is included in your packet. And then, as we have talked about in previous requests, there is a map of the approved short-term rentals in the Trowbridge area, and the yellow dot representing two, six, five, two Moran's pending application. So you'll note that there are none in the immediate vicinity. I mean, there are a couple of block away or two. But I would say they are relatively spread out at this point.
Sixteen of them?
That, yep, that sounds right.
Oh, sixteen, and how, what is the square? Footage isn't right, so how big is Trowbridge?
Square miles, I do not know off the top of my head, but I mean, that's something we could put together.
Yeah, I think we might want to start looking at that. I, I do think we need to look at that. What's the square miles, and how many are we going to put in that small community? And most people tell us that they're just renting it for a short amount of time. They're coming back there to live in the, I'll call it the off-season, some people might not call it that. But, you know, I I don't think I'm alone in being concerned about the number of family homes that are turning into short-term rentals.
That is all I have on this.
You written correspondence at all?
Nope.
No phone calls?
Nope.
Is Heather here?
The applicant is here to address the commission if needed.
Okay. Anyone have any further questions or comments before we open up the public hearing? All right, we will open up the public hearing at seven oh eight. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak can do so now. No one? Double checking? All right, we'll close the public hearing at seven oh nine. Any questions or comments, commissioners?
Just going off of what Linda said, I know Jason did address, not square footage, but how many houses were in Trowbridge before, and then the percentage of short-term rentals. And I want to say it was less than one percent.
Maybe, yeah, I can't remember, we can look at that again, I.
But I agree, there's a lot in a small area, but I know per capita, I don't think it's too alarming. Well, it's getting, you know, it will be after many more, but.
I think we've talked about discussing that probably at a separate time and actually revisiting our current ordinance, which could stand with the legislature or could not. So people are aware that the legislature in Michigan is looking at and has looked at and has done nothing about taking control of this whole thing, taking the communities out of controlling this. Correct?
There's, there's been, there's been proposed legislation on both sides of the issue.
Yeah, so it's an, it's an issue not just in this state.
I did drive by there today, and I couldn't see any numbers for the address on the house at all.
I put them there, they're on there.
Are they? Okay.
I really had one of the pillars on the deck, I put them up there.
Okay.
And to remind everybody, the township's ordinances require, or at, at minimum, it's like an inch or two inches tall. I mean, so you might not be able to see them from the road all the time. But that's not to say that they aren't there, so.
Yeah, and I, I didn't say they weren't, I just said I didn't see them, so.
Yeah, if you look on the pillars, the, the wooden deck, there's a bunch of pillars that are on
Okay.
Right in the center of the house.
All right. Well, if we have no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to prove the special use permit for the short-term rental as described in item six A of our agenda.
I'll second that. Further discussion, if anyone? I'll do a roll, I'll vote, Steve Hakinen, yes. Dennis Ferraro?
Yes.
Catherine Cody?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes, and Linda Winslow's a.
Yes.
Okay.
It's our ordinance.
Nancy Ann O'Shea? You're all set, I'll finally.
Yep, I will follow up tomorrow as far as next steps. And don't feel like you need to stick around for the whole meeting if you don't want to, so. Yep. You're welcome to, but if you don't, if you don't want to, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Six B, special use public, permit public hearing request. Propose short-term rental land used to be located on a property located within rural residential zoning district. Address is five, eighty Brickyard Road in Marquette. Parcel tax ID is five, two, zero, eight, zero, one, eight, zero, zero, nine, zero, zero. Applicant is Sonny, or William and Sher, Quail, five, eighty Brickyard Road. I was thinking that, I was looking at that. You see that? It says William and Sher, and I said Sonny and Sher. I don't say that. Okay, William and Sher, Quail. Any information from Eric?
Yep, so staff has received a complete application for another short-term rental, a special use permit application for five, eighty Brickyard Road. Property is shown here. You'll notice it's a very long property, and the house is set back almost all the way in the kind of rear of the property by the river there. I'm having some trouble with the clicker here, so I'm gonna have to stand up and look at this. Like I said, complete application, fees have been paid, and there is a map showing a, the Brickyard Road area. Green dot being previously approved short-term rental, and the yellow being the pending application tonight. As you are probably well aware, this is to simply schedule the public hearing. And we would suggest that the public hearing be scheduled, just wanna make sure I get the dates right. July ten at seven PM. July ten, twenty twenty-four at seven PM. And the applicants are here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this one, from anyone?
Yes, is the house vacant now?
It is vacant now.
Okay, and do you live, I'm sorry, I guess I, is your, do you live here in Marquette?
We live at eighteen oh eight Warner.
Oh, okay. And so are, who's gonna do the monitoring of the short-term renters, and who's gonna, you know, manage the, the property?
Yeah, we will do that ongoing.
Okay. Thank you.
So I went to see where it was today, and I, you have to go down a dirt road. Oh, I didn't feel like we should.
That driveway is a long driveway.
I, oh, okay. Okay, so I didn't feel like I could drive down that driveway, but I guess I could drive down that driveway. Yeah, okay.
It's a private road, but the last portion of it is paved.
Oh, okay.
Once you get down the driveway, the circle drive at the end is paved.
Okay, okay, oh, well, yeah, I mean, I had, I think we had the truck, yeah.
Well, we are, we are the only home on that drive, so it is private drive.
Okay, so Brickyard Road ends?
Brickyard Road ends just past the next home. We are one down from the end of the road.
At the next house.
It's, this map shows Brickyard Road continuing, but that's all conservancy.
Oh, that's, oh.
The nature conservancy is back there.
I know Kathy, yeah, Cathy. Her husband, right.
Your property doesn't go up to the river, does it? You don't have river, you don't have river, but it's hard to tell on that.
Longyear will not let us own that property. That's Longyear property.
Oh, it is?
It is.
So, so do you intend to rent this many times, short-term rental? Cause the traffic will increase with short-term rentals?
Well, I mean, our, our minimum rental will be, you know, a three-day, or four, or four-day.
Oh, that's your minimum, four days?
It's not gonna be, you know, you know, one-night rental. This'll be like three or four nights.
I see.
Will be the minimum rent.
Okay.
And I believe that's the way the same, the, the property is next door to ours, the Peters home.
So there's already a short-term rental there?
Green dot there is, is Catherine Peters', and that is a short-term rental as well.
It was approved, I think.
Years ago.
I think when the ordinance first went into place, I think they were one of the first applicants.
Well, it's Cathy and Lou's house, okay.
So if you wanted to, could you access that river, or could anyone stay in there, access the river, like, do we put a canoe in, or kayak, or anything?
It's pretty far down, it's a cliff.
There's a, there's a big bank behind the house that goes almost straight down to the river, so it's not very accessible at all.
But you can go on the conservatory land, hike through there.
Yeah, that's at the end of the road.
That's Longyear right there.
Is that, is that the dead, what river is that?
Conservatory is Longyear.
Okay.
No, that, I think that Cathy and Lou Peters donated that money to someone, not Longyear. Isn't that how that conservatory worked? They gave the property to the conservatory. And the nature conservatory owns it, so Longyear does not own that. They own property next to it, I think.
They own the property behind ours.
Yeah.
On the other side of the river.
Oh, okay.
The nature conservancy is to the west.
Between the yellow dot and the river, that's Longyear's.
Yeah, wow.
Talking about the Valmede Reserve, right?
Yes, yes, that's where Kathy was, right, Valmede.
Yeah, and their, their property adjoins the Longyear.
That was her wish.
On schedule? Motion to approve the public hearing for the special use permit as described in item six B, and set the hearing for July tenth, twenty twenty-four at seven PM.
Support.
Further discussion? Okay, now in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Aries, now set for July tenth?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Six C, special use permit, public hearing request. Propose short-term rental land used to be located on property located within rural residential zoning district. Address is three seventy-six County Road five fifty in Marquette. Parcel tax ID is five, two, zero, eight, zero, zero, four, zero, five, one, five, zero. Applicant is Mason M. Pierce, three seventy-six County Road five fifty in Marquette. Eric.
So staff has received another special use permit application for a proposed short-term rental land use at three, seven, six County Road five fifty. A complete application has been submitted, fees have been paid. The application is in your packet for your review, including the narrative, survey, and some other map-type documents. Are you here representing the applicant?
Right.
Okay, you are, I'm sorry?
Christopher Dollar.
Okay.
Mason's in-law.
Okay.
Parents-in-law.
Just wanted to make a note for the record, if you could go to the next slide there. There's an overview of the property on County Road five fifty. And then if you go to the next one, and there is a map showing the approved short-term rentals in green and the pending in yellow. Staff would recommend scheduling a public hearing for July ten, twenty twenty-four at seven PM.
Eric, is the cluster of three and four, are those that fills five fifty?
Correct, yep.
So this is just up the road, or down the road?
Correct, fills five fifty.
So how far do you think that, is that a mile?
Probably less.
Is it a mi, it's less than?
Five hundred feet?
Yeah.
Five hundred feet, and we're gonna put one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Oh, you mean the whole string?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I guess I have to go dry there.
That might be a half-mile, maybe, or mile, I don't know.
Okay, so that's.
Where's Antlers in relation to your property? Is that?
I'm not sure.
Okay, but you're not that close to Antlers anyway, right?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Antlers is the?
Tree service.
Tree service.
Oh.
Yeah, they're, I believe.
Okay. Is the house, is the property vacant now, the house vacant?
It is. Mason and my daughter, Sinara, inherited it about a year ago. Kind of painted it up a little bit, and they're just both striding out their careers, and she went to school down at Michigan State, and she's a lawyer down there now. And Mason just got his electrical journeyman's license a couple of weeks, well, about a month ago, and they're just getting started down there. They would have been up here, but my daughter's thirty-nine weeks pregnant, and they didn't want to travel for the meeting, so they asked us to come in instead. They're planning on moving up here within the next year, not sure when that's gonna be, depends on how the birth of baby goes and all of that. It's, they're not intending to do this long-term at all, so.
So are they intending to move into this home?
Right, right.
Okay, when, after, when everything settled down, and
Yep.
They're not sleep deprived anymore from the baby, right?
Exactly, right. They do have a camp on Middle Island Point, you know, the point there, so they'll be up here a lot, and they'll be checking in if whatever, you know, maintenance needs to be done, and that type of thing, and they've got somebody lined up to do housekeeping, and any repairs, emergency repairs, I think, all me and I.
And Eric, do you live in Marquette as well?
In Gwin, but.
In Gwin, okay. So who would, who would be responsible, like, in town, let's just say if, you know, there was a a party there, there was a disturbance, and somebody had to, you know, who would, who are they gonna rely on to?
He's, he grew up in that home, so he's, he knows the whole neighborhood, so I'm sure if it was at that point, they'd probably just call the police.
So he's got contacts, and, and, and he's, he's a local from here, okay.
His father, his uncle was Phil, from Phil's five fifty, right.
Okay.
So they, he knows everybody in that whole neighborhood.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
So there's numbers on the house, so we can drive there and we'll be able to figure out what it is, where it is, Jenny?
Couldn't tell you for sure, but we will be sure they are there. My dark, how's that?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll take a ride by, sure.
And we, I, I know what the ordinance says, not very big, but you know, our fire department really needs them big.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and you, they go up that road a many times in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so bigger, bigger is probably better.
Right, absolutely.
I'll make a motion, is that what you're waiting for, Jim? I'll make a motion that we schedule the public hearing for item C, which is the tax ID number fifty-two dash zero, eight, dash zero, zero, four, dash zero, five, one, dash five, zero, four, July tenth, Eric?
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, July tenth for you, too.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
I guess we don't need me to push that button. Oh, no unfinished business? Okay, there we go.
No unfinished business. Go ahead on the correspondence. I'm wondering what the four sixty-one, County Road five fifty Eagle letter is about.
Yep, so that is a property probably everybody is familiar with, especially the two that just left. That, the letter included in your packet tonight was sent to the property owners. The property itself, as mentioned, is four, six, one, County Road five fifty. This is a property that is a dump, basically, and the fire happened last year, I believe, or maybe even two years ago at this point. But Eagle had reached out to me, staff, about a property in Trowbridge, and then I returned asking about this one, if they could go check it out, as well as a couple others. And they were able to get this letter out, so that is included for your information.
So why did they get involved with this property?
In our attempts to enforce the ordinance and get it cleaned up, they've gone unsuccessful. So I think the more pressure from different bodies, the better. So they were.
What's, what's the solid waste, or what's the? What is the waste that, is it tires?
They say solid waste, I'm pretty sure they just refer to the junk in general, as well as, I think, kind of household garbage being disposed of and things like that.
Is it, is it, is this near a wetland or a stream, or?
It is on the non-lake side of County Road five fifty, call it, so the west side of the road, so I mean, it is relatively close to Lake Superior. But I, they felt it was severe enough to get involved, so.
So they're just another tool in our toolbox? And so they also were a tool that we used for someone in Trowbridge Park?
They had reached, this, this was a case that they had ongoing, they had reached out to me to send the, like, kind of vice versa. Same thing, I just said more, more organizations, the better, as far as the pressure on some of these property owners. So yes, I, I did get involved and send a letter to that particular person in Trowbridge Park, a particular property owner.
So how, how long till we know that's effective, if it worked, if it gets cleaned up?
Good question.
Because?
Right.
Right, people are really hot about this.
Yep.
They should be.
And I guess I will kind of roll this into some other property maintenance stuff. I will be going out to seven, six, zero, Lake and Chaminde Road tomorrow morning with our new township-appointed sheriff's deputy. The previous one has been reassigned to the courthouse. So I will be making a visit out there tomorrow to take some very brief photos, as recommended by our township attorney. And then from there, and this, this is by his request, that he wanted some up-to-date photos before he authorized this, but from there, we will basically immediately issue tickets to the property owners again.
So let me ask you this.
Sure.
In relation to the solid waste, and we're just talking about junk on the ground? So in, in, in some instances, that could be appropriate in, in other areas?
Right, this seven, six, zero, Lake and Chaminde, being one of them, that I have requested Eagle to get involved with.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that all property owners, and I think there are three property owners to that parcel, should be ticketed. I think there may have been some excuse as to, you know, illness or something like that, and I think that was kind of a blow-off. So I would say that that would be a imperative thing to do, too, to make sure that they're all involved in it. And then, you know, there's also, anyway, when you get out there, I think you'll probably find out, you know, what needs to be taken care of.
And just for everyone's information, the township board did authorize the hiring of a part-time seasonal position to do property maintenance enforcement. So hopefully that person will be on board in July. I know there's not a long season after July, but if this is effective and works for us, we'll look at budgeting that into our next year's budget to have that person available.
I think this, the, getting the state involved under this auspices of Eagleism.
Brilliant.
Was there, in any of the discussions that you've had with Attorney Zappa, did he indicate, or did you bring up the issue of? Did he indicate or did you bring up the issue of maybe a different procedure this time after a judgment is entered for continuing jurisdiction of the court to enforce, you know, contempt, for example?
We haven't gotten too far into that discussion yet. Obviously with our previous process being send the three letters and then we'll get to the ticket. With this being, I sent a letter last month to the property owners. I did have some correspondence with the occupant, who said he was getting stuff in a storage shed and things like that. Upon issuing that ticket, which hopefully will happen as soon as next week, obviously those discussions with Attorney Zappa will happen regarding.
What the, I mean, I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I'm obviously getting way ahead of you here in terms of the process, because the ticket will be issued, there'll be a time limit for compliance. If there's no compliance, then there'll be some kind of summons issued, there'll be a court proceedings and so forth. I guess what I was asking is there was a court proceeding last time, but, you know, there was some action taken, but then it was disregarded.
Right.
So I was trying to get at, if we go through that process again and there is a judgment entered, can, can Attorney Zappa ask the court to retain jurisdiction to enforce that? So you don't have to keep going back with ticketing and so forth. You could have more immediate action, like, for example, if the judge retains jurisdiction for enforcement, then orders of contempt can be issued quite easily with substantial monetary fines. And that will have more teeth, is what I was trying to get at.
And that, that is something I'll absolutely suggest to Attorney Zappa. I do remember we have previously discussed the consent decree.
I don't know if it can be done, but if it can, you know.
That is something I brought up before, but I don't think I ever really got a direct answer from him on it. But that is.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you be able to do something like what the city Marquette does? Where you, once they're in violation, there's a fine of so much per day until it's actually taken care of?
Yes, our ordinance does allow for that. That is obviously a drastic step that I don't think the township has done in the past. At least not in my time, they haven't, relatively short time, they haven't. But that is a step I think that would be appropriate here.
Well, you know, and I think what, what the deal is, is that, you know, once, I mean, it's, it, it, it goes and then it comes back.
Right.
And then it goes and it comes back. And then, you know, and, you know, I, I hate to make it personal, but my house doesn't have the value it should have. And that really bothers me a great deal.
Understood.
A great deal, 'cause that's a fiduciary thing on my part. I've lost value. I've, I've lost money. And, and I'm, and, and, you know, asking the, and I've been, I've been on this for like five years. I mean, five years, and for me to go out there tonight, it's the same. You know, and I'm getting to the point where my wife and I might want to decide to sell. And at the house prices that are out there, they're stunning, what they're getting for places out there. And so I don't wanna get the short end of the stick, because I have a junkyard next to my house. And I've told Jason that if there was a house like that in Oak Hills and there was something next to it, oh my God, they would be on that so fast, it would make your head spin. But because I live out in woods, out of sight, out of mind, I'm getting the short end of the stick. And I have been for a long time. My wife's family's lived out there for almost eighty years. I mean, it means a great deal to her, much more than me, and I've been out there for almost forty years. So I think that, you know, something's gonna have to be done, or there's gonna be hell to pay.
I, I think a drastic step is necessary.
Right.
Because they just don't care. And so if they don't care, then make it really cost them.
Something.
Charge them whatever the, I know the city, it's five hundred dollars a day, I don't know if that's what the township. But, I mean, these have to start paying five hundred dollars a day, go get it cleaned up rather quickly.
And it's not, it's also, we're setting a precedent here, because there are places in other parts of our township that are disgraceful, okay? And they're smelly and they're dangerous. And we have them in Trowbridge Park, where there's a lot of people per square mile. So that would help, we say, we just have to say, this is how it is. I don't know the policy, I don't know the steps. I mean, I don't know the steps, are they written down?
Not officially anywhere, I mean, they're contained within the property maintenance ordinance.
So do we, does, is that our job, the planning commission, to get those steps written and send those out to everybody? I, I mean, I don't know whose job it is.
Staff could certainly draft up a kind of one-sheeter of here's.
Here's the steps, this is what's gonna happen.
Here's kind of the basic stuff you need to be doing with your property to keep it in compliance, things like that. And that could go out with, like, regular mailing, like a water bill mailing or something like that.
I, I mean, I, I think people think they live in Trowbridge or in Marquette Township, and I think they think that there is no property maintenance. That it's their property, they can throw stuff wherever, 'cause it used to be like that when I was a child.
Could we get this on the agenda for our next meeting also, so we can? And even if we could get a copy of what happens and the fines and, you know, whatever you can do to make this neighbor of his clean this up or, I mean, even have him arrested or, you know, something just to get this done, so he knows that the township means business, so Steve doesn't have to keep dealing with this.
And, you know, and the problem is this, there are three owners, they all have to feel the pain. Because if one does, why should the rest walk? Because they are owners of that property, regardless if they don't spend as much time out there, regardless if somebody bought it as an investment, regardless if somebody's wife is sick and he can't do anything. They've all gotta feel the pain, or otherwise, nothing gets done.
Well, who is named, who, who were the defendants named, or the respondents, named in the enforcement action that was filed in the circuit court here? All three owners?
All three owners were named, the occupant accepted responsibility of the ticket, which basically makes it go away, more or less. And then the other two denied responsibility, meaning that they don't live there and it's not their junk. And so they were the two that ended up appearing in court.
Okay, did they appear by counsel or were they, were they represented by attorney?
No.
Okay. Well, that's good. So Zappa should be able to, I mean.
I'd like to have this on the agenda until this is resolved, so we can discuss it at every single meeting until we finally get this resolved. It's gone on way too long.
He says that if we, if we have a procedure that's helpful for this new person we're hiring and helpful for you.
I was just gonna say, with this, with this new person starting, I think, send like that one-sheeter idea with the process and kind of the basic, basic ideas of the ordinance, as far as here's how you should keep your property. It would be pretty appropriate to say, hey, we hired somebody, you'll be going around, he or she will be going around. And here's, here's the process and basics of the ordinance, so.
And we can post it on our, on our webpage. It's always good for that group of people that get their information from the web.
Is Carolyn Sancier the one that's in charge of the?
Yep, she's the representative from?
Eagle?
Eagle, correct.
Okay. I didn't know that. Just got that, you know her?
I know her.
You know her?
Yeah. Okay, so we're all, we're trying, Steve.
Understand.
Get on the agenda here.
Understand.
Eight B, Good Time Oldies Car Show, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Who's doing this?
That's on there just for that. I think Radio Results Network is doing it this year, township is really not involved, it's just on there for information. So this Sunday, nine to two.
Okay.
Or Saturday, it's fifteenth, Saturday or Sunday.
It's Father's Day, get on the stick.
And the master plan update kickoff meeting?
Yep, just a brief update on the master plan process. Staff did meet last week with the representatives from Short Elliott Hendrickson, SEH, to talk about kind of the kickoff of the master plan process. We talked a lot about kind of the broader issues in the township. So think housing and the intersection and property maintenance, and it was a very wide-ranging discussion. They do plan on being, I believe I got this correct, at the second meeting in June to address the planning commission and kind of do a similar type of thing as staff did, as far as meeting content, talk about issues and the process going forward. So that's on there just for a brief update.
It will be here on the twenty-sixth.
Right, yeah.
So, so, so I get this straight, so that meeting will be dedicated to that? Or it will be a piece?
Maybe not, I mean, there may be other agenda items. I don't think we have anything else at this point for that agenda.
Okay.
So at this point, it is the only thing on that agenda.
All right. Move on to D, Marquette Housing Intergovernmental Task Force, target market analysis.
Yep, so the Marquette County Intergovernmental Housing Task Force, that is led by Lake Superior Community Partnership and the Marquette County Land Bank. I believe Lynn and Jason has been involved a little bit with it. Included in your pa, or not included in your packet, but provided afterwards is the section pertaining to Marquette Township. And then also provided tonight is a, the basically first section of the entire document. The entire document itself, as I was telling some of you before the meeting, some seven hundred pages, so it's not feasible to print. But these first seventeen pages, kind of like I explained in that email, provides some good context, the executive summary of the whole thing, as well as some explanation of some of the terms they use. This TMA is kind of a, it's, as you'll read, it's a specialized study of the wants, needs and, how do they say? Preferences of households in the area, preferences of households moving into the area, and then also households looking to move, maybe not in this specific area, but maybe UPY. So it is geared towards developers and contractors, not so much government, as it is intended to be a tool for them to say, hey, there's demand here and let's go develop here. So that is included for your information. And the, in the email I sent, included is a link, which does have, can you just? Yep. It does have a link to a page on Lake Superior Community Partnership's website, and that contains the entire document, if you are interested in reading that.
It's just gone. It's okay.
I kind of thought that workshop would have been a little better than what it was.
Yeah, I wondered if, so, so for, Jim and I did attend the luncheon event of this conclusion to the study. And I found that it just had some people up there talking about how they were deciding what to build and how to build. And it, it wasn't really as valuable as, I really wanted to know. Yeah, no, I really wanted to know how they did this, who they got their information from, you know, that whole process. And then when I got the report, I said, I don't know what they're telling me. So, you know, if, if some of us feel that same way, there should be an expert that put all this together, that should be able to come and explain it. And it could be our staff, who are the experts, but I wanna read it now, again.
I wouldn't go as far as saying we're the experts on it, as we did not prepare it. Sharon Wood of Land Use USA is the contractor that did it for the task force. She was present at that, the meeting that day. We did miss, and I was at it as well, the luncheon. We did miss the morning session, the deep dive, as they called it, where they really, I think, explained this. I know, I think Lynn was at the morning session, so she may be able to expand a little bit on it. But the website, I do know, has a video from Land Use USA, a ten-minute video or so, that explains the TMA. So that might be useful to watch, I have not watched it yet. But.
Yeah.
So why don't you just give me the Cliff Notes summary of this? What, what are they attempting to do here?
I think.
Make a case to developers to say, here's how many homes need to be built in the area.
And not focusing on any housing segment, just, hey, there's demand for housing up here.
No, they, they break it down, they have, it, it explains it as far as how, where they get the data from, but they break it down into different demographic groups.
Right, right, right.
So they're saying retire, then they have their kind of cute little names, retirees, the Silver Surfers or whatever they're called.
Or the platinum guys right there.
They want to move up here and they even break it down to, they even break it down into housing types as far as the retirees don't want a, the retirees don't want a four-bed, three-bath house. They want a two-bed, one-bath kind of efficiency, efficiency unit that they can maintain and keep up. You know, so it does go into pretty great detail, and like I said, the entire document's some seven hundred pages long.
We, we have, we just hired a consultant to help us with our master plan. So if there's anything in this document that could help us in our master planning with respect to developing housing in our township, then our consultants that we just hired ought to be able to take a look at this and say, if, if there's anything, they ought to be able to interpret it for us in terms of what it means to us as a planning commission. So I don't, I'm gonna, I, I read the first thing, not, not the executive summary they just gave us. And I, I found, you know, some of it interesting about how many houses and stuff. But then I had the same, had the same reaction as Linda did, my, my eyes started glaze over with all these.
You can always look at so many charts.
But then I haven't read this yet, but I mean, in terms of what it means to us, our consultants should be able to.
Like I said, it's, it's documented, targeted to developers. And regarding the master plan update, they, the plan is at least to, they're gonna provide us with a Dropbox link, which is basically a online link where we can just drop stuff into our master plan, our property maintenance ordinance, our GIS data. This will be something that will be in there for them to access and utilize, so.
Are we?
It's all kind of.
We're not gonna have access to the Dropbox, we?
I'm not sure what, what the plan is. I mean, you could certainly send something to me and say, put this in there. But I think the plan at this point would be for staff to have access.
It kind of reminded me of, we had a study done for Third Street with the DDA and came up with this big grandiose plan of, you know, what to do for Third Street.
Familiar.
That'll never happen. And I just think, you know, spending money on that, it was like ninety thousand dollars to help them do that study, to have us show what you should be doing, that'll never happen. And same thing with these guest cottages that college kids want, well, sure, yeah, who, who wouldn't want that when you're a college kid? But you're gonna pay two thousand dollars a month for it? No, that's not gonna happen either, so.
Yeah, I think that what they always miss.
Realistic about, you know, what, what you can do around here.
Yeah, they miss the cul, the community culture. So they have to know who we are when they make recommendations.
I think they just.
Yeah, they just.
Say, this is something, you know, just like, let's have a charrette. You know, and all this other stuff that, that you have and it's kind of.
Anyways.
Doesn't work, but.
Yeah.
Okay? Right. Reports. Township Board.
And so I mentioned already that we were hiring a person that is important to this group. There is money that we get from the state of Michigan, we call it marijuana money. So every marijuana-selling establishment sends money to the state. You guys maybe already know all this. And then based on the number of facilities selling in your community, you get so much back. So we got like almost a hundred and eighteen thousand, maybe. So that's where the money will come to pay for that person for the summer. They are not a full-time or a part-time employee, they are just a, I'm gonna call them a contract contingent person. Yeah, yeah. The other thing we're doing with some of that money is we are going to resurface the tennis pickleball. Yeah, yeah. The other thing we're doing with some of that money is we are going to resurface the tennis pickleball court. So um, you know, we talked a little bit about that. Um, from the perspective, if people expect to use that for league play or something, you know, we'll need to have a contract with that group. As we do with the softball for the use of Lyons Field, we did extend that contract for another year because the softball field wasn't usable this year because we had to put in some sprinkling system. And so the girls softball team from Market Senior High School uses that field as their home field. So that, um, you'll see that happening. If you're interested in helping on any committees other than this one, or you have some friends that might be interested, there are some openings and Lynn Duran is the person to contact for that. Uh, we are hosting, um, actually sponsoring, not hosting, we are sponsoring Community Day at Lyons Field again. And so um it's really pretty family fund oriented, so a little bit away from other things. But we do have bands playing from seven to nine. Um, you can pass that around. The Maynard's will play again and people seem to like that. We are not necessarily going to have anyone selling food. We'll be giving away some free ice cream and popcorn and who knows what else we get. I think that may be it. Other than we approved at the board level what we approved at the planning commission level for the piece of property by Meyer and um that small mall to be um whatever we approved. Business, okay? Yeah, and the interesting part was um there were quite a few people there from that particular uh area. And their concerns seemed to be a lot about traffic flow. So a lot about, they felt Brookton Road, is it Brookton Road? No. What is it called?
Brickyard.
Brickyard Road. They felt Brickyard Road um ended or curved. And that was Brickyard Road and they felt that people um don't pay attention to that. They think Brickyard Road goes straight into Meyer. And they don't stop at the stop sign and, you know, there's lots of traffic, they felt, going there. Well, there is traffic there. That's a business. Um, but eventually it was approved. And um so the proposed person to purchase that property is going to make, um, his plan is to have a golf place where you can play golf all winter, practice, get better. He said he's very busy and he's local. He lives in Nagone. And that was his plan, so I don't know if that'll come to fruition or if he, I'm sure we'll have to come to the planning commission with his plan. So we'll see what really happens.
As you'll remember, basically, any proposed commercial use on that property will have to come to the planning commission due to its adjacent or due to the fact that it's adjacent to a residential property.
Yep. So um we did talk a lot about um the um traffic issue. You know, like, do we need to do something with that stop sign? You know, how are we gonna get people to stop at that stop sign? How are they, you know, they, they're, they're not looking at that road like that. I did go on that road today. Maybe you'll all go on that road now and see. Um, and I, I think Dave and I counted about twelve places along that road. It was very quiet. We were the only car on the road. So um, so I didn't see any increased traffic.
I just don't understand why they're worried about the traffic because they're not gonna be going down Brickyard Road at all.
I don't.
It won't affect them down that road. They're just gonna be going right there, you know, at Burris where you go into the driveway.
Well, I'm not sure because the, the person may have to make the driveway off Brickyard Road, but it would be no different in my mind than the gas station, which is off Brickyard Road. But um uh some people in our audience were there um to, uh, not wanting it done too, and they were here tonight.
Has there been many reported accidents there?
I, I don't think so. We, we could get the logs. I don't, I don't know that the fire department has ever gone to any serious accidents there, but I don't know that.
It'd be interesting to know.
Yeah, we, we can ask our deputy to spend time there, but you know, you know how that works. People see the deputy, they don't do anything. They're not supposed to.
You could put a speed bump in like there was on Brickyard Road down there, fifty-four that post.
Except they're county roads and we can't do a whole lot with county roads. Now, I don't know if the Meyer Road can put one in. I don't, I don't know. You know, the road thing is, is tough, tough.
Being that it's a private road, I guess technically they could. But it's gonna be a little tough on the township's part to go back and say you need to put one in.
A solution looking for a problem.
Yeah, maybe. I, I don't know. But um it was, it, you know, it's very quiet back there. I, I mean, you know, really? I, I.
They'll probably get more traffic from the search for them.
We'll see if, we'll see if they're all here for that, right? I thought, wow, but they have one back there and no one, I don't know.
And the, as we discussed tonight, the nature conservancy or the preserve is back there, which brings a little bit of traffic to non-residential, so.
Right, yeah. I don't know.
You could put one of those flashing stop signs up there.
Well, we couldn't, but, yeah, we could ask the road commission. Um, so, so maybe, I don't know if that went anywhere at the township board meeting. I can ask if someone asked the road commission. You know, the hard part is they own the roads and people are going thirty-five in Trowbridge and that means they're going forty-five. And, you know, there's blind spots and I don't know, you know, really, I don't, I, I hope the state legislature was attempting to take up a bill that would allow us to make the speed limits, not the county. The county, what they do, maybe you all know this, they put those clickers out there and measure how fast people are driving and then they raise the speed because ninety percent of the people are speeding, right? So now we make it fifty. I, I mean, I don't, that, that doesn't make any sense in my brain, but. I don't know.
Do you even really need a stop sign there?
Well, they feel that.
Be a better solution is just to get rid of that stop sign so that you don't have to worry about people stopping at it.
Yeah, because the traffic is gonna come from Meyer and go to the roundabout. But the people coming out of that road, they said, you guys have to help me, they said, that's the road. And so they don't really want to stop.
So. There's been a stop sign there for ever, so.
Yeah, so I don't know. I, I don't know. It's not gonna, you know, progress moves forward. You either, um, you either say, I'm gonna fight it or I am going to embrace it. And sometimes there's a middle ground, but it's not gonna not go forward for the most part. We all know that. We don't have to like it, but we do know it, right? So that was it.
All right. Uh, what's Rec Committee, anything?
Nothing to report.
Road Committee?
Uh, Road Committee did meet uh two weeks ago at this point, one week ago. Um, discussed the master plan update, uh, which we've been doing at the past few meetings, some of the kind of larger ideas they want to see in it as well. And that's about it. Planning and zoning. Uh, you'll see reported just this week that Michigan Veteran Homes did enter a purchase agreement for uh the new Jacob Eddy complex right up the road here, so that's exciting.
So I think we have some questions about that. I have some questions about that. So that means.
Discussions are a little above my pay grade, but I'll try to answer them.
So my assumption is they're, they aren't, they don't pay taxes.
As I understand, that's correct, yeah.
So that's a pretty big taxable parcel that will move to no taxes.
Correct.
And we will be providing them services. Okay, I just want to be clear about that.
They pay, they pay for the services though, obviously. They don't, they don't get water and sewer free.
They get fire and EMS.
So, yeah.
They, they'll pay for that though.
How will they pay for it?
Well, the, the VA will reimburse.
Every call.
Oh, that's my, that, that will be my question, yeah.
Again, as I understand it, yeah.
Okay, okay, so they'll be reimbursed.
It's got its pros and cons, but I would say in a personally opinion, it's an overall pro for the township to have it sited here, so.
Well, that parcel was proposed to be a park anyway, and that would have been off a tax base as well.
Correct, correct. I agree. And it's a beautiful spot and I think you can see the lake.
Yep.
Will they be taking all of that property up or will there be room for a possible park there?
I'm not sure. We have not seen any site plans yet.
Thirty-eight acres, it's great.
It's a big, big parcel chunk.
It'd be great if we could um some way have a partnership into a park and they could access it. I mean.
It, uh, the, the, any proposed park obviously wouldn't be on the scale as we had proposed with that trust fund acquisition application. Um, but yeah, that's a, yeah.
People love to see young children riding their bikes, playing on swings. I mean it, it's a huge boost. Yeah, well, maybe we.
Well, even if nothing else, I mean, obviously if they're not gonna use swings or slides or things like that, but you could have like a picnic area, a growl-out area, you know, that possibly you could get state money for and build something there with that.
Some bike walking trails. I, I mean, I think there's a, maybe our, yeah, someone will help us come up with some great ideas.
Yeah, but I, again, I, I had not been involved in the discussion, so I just learned it from the news this week, like everybody else. So um, I mean, I heard rumors that they were looking at a few sites in the township. Um, and that was obviously one that just kind of, you could put two and two together, that that was one of them. But we will keep the commission updated as discussions progress, so.
And they'll have to come to this group with a site plan. Yes, no, maybe so?
I'm not sure. Um, that's something I could look into.
Yeah, yeah, well, that, that.
I would think they have to.
Me too, but I don't know.
Come here with plans for the parking lot, so why wouldn't the state?
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's it?
Yep, that's all I got.
All right. So we got public comment, right?
Announcements, none, public comment.
And any additional comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, a couple of things. I went to the uh Marquette Rockestra. I don't know if any, have you heard of that at all? They've been doing it for the last number of years. I went last year. Uh, it's a group of local musicians, rock musicians primarily. I'm sure some from the township. Uh, thirty of them, I think, this year participated. And they, uh, last year they did Pink Floyd's Dark Side of the Moon. The year before that, they did Sergeant Pepper. This year they did Michigan Rock and uh it was phenomenal. And I'm sentimental, so the, the first chords of Grand Funk, I started crying, so, you know. But it was, it was a beautiful show. They did a nice job. They donate all that proceeds to uh music in the schools for kids. Uh, so they do a nice job. It's all volunteer. Uh, and the university uh uh kicks in. I think a lot of people, it's, it's a lot of money that's just donated to it, so they did a loaded job.
Uh, I had a comment. I, I was contacted last week by Phil Moran, who was the uh planning commission chairperson for Poli Township. And he said, what, what's going on with this CREO comprehensive? Put my cheaters on here. The compre- uh, the compatible renewable energy ordinance that every township is gonna have to have if the township wants to have a say in the citing of these large solar uh entities that was just passed. So this is, this is the way for the townships to retain some control over the citing of these large commercial of solar or wind. But in order to do that, by November, I think is the deadline, the township has to adopt an ordinance called a compatible renewable energy ordinance, or CREEO. And uh, so anyway, so, you know. I, I'm, I'm retired. I don't have anything else to do, so I got on the computer and looked at the statute and the statute has sections that pretty much lays out what the ordinance should be. It's under health and welfare, uh, under the statute. So I cut and pasted and then rearranged from a PDF to a Word document all of these provisions and I sent it to Phil Moran and I copied Eric and I copied Jason. And I think it would be quite easy. We don't have to invent the wheel twice, you know, reinvent the wheel. Uh, Marquette City is probably all over this, you know, and probably have, are working on a CREEO. And we should think about this because if we, I mean, I don't know, I mean, where, I, I, I don't know where in the township they would put a big solar, this is bigger than, than what's in our ordinance right now. You know, it's, it's bigger than even the, the ones that require a special use permit, right?
Like industrials.
It's an industrial size, yeah. So I don't know. I mean, that's something that I think that we should at least consider. If we don't want to opt in and have control, we don't think it's, that they're ever gonna build anything like that here in our township, fine. But if we think it might be something that might be done, then we should probably get this CREEO, compatible renewer, renewable energy ordinance. So I just wanted to bring that up, bring it to your attention and, you know.
I hadn't really had a chance to look at it yet. I know Jason was exploring it a little bit, but it is definitely on our radar, so.
Okay.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I sent you a copy of the, of, of my Word document as well. Okay.
That, that would be a good thing to do. Um, but I know that there was a bill introduced to try and take that away from the township and keep it with the state instead and have the township not having control over that whatsoever.
No, that passed. That, that law passed, but there was an amendment to that law that gave the townships some control. But in order to have that control, the townships have to adopt this compatible renewable energy ordinance. If, if you don't adopt this ordinance, then you don't, you don't have any control over it. The utility goes right to the, uh, the, the, uh, whoever the entity is, goes right to the pu- to the Michigan Public.
Service Commission.
Service Commission, right. But if we want to, we want to opt in to have local control, then it's my understanding anyway, and I may, I mean, I could be absolutely wrong, but at least Phil Moran from Poli Township was concerned about it. They probably have more concern than we do because they have probably more space than we do. But um if, if that's a concern and we want to have control, if we think there ever is gonna be that kind of industrial-sized power thing grid here, then um we should think about adopting this kind of ordinance.
Does that have to do with wind turbines also or just the solar?
Wind and solar. Mm-hmm, it's both. You know, so, uh, you know, it's, and I think the deadline's November, so it's not that far off. But it, it seems like it would be an easy ordinance to put together because they, they tell you right in the bill, like, basically, you know.
Anything more, Dan?
No.
Anthony?
No.
Then the wind flow?
Um, just one other thing. The um Market County Conservation District came and did a presentation for the board. And I don't know if any of you have butterbur on your property, but they, um, if you do and you want to um get rid of it, um, they um have some money that can help and some knowledge about how to do that. And they also are located right next to us here and they did plant wildflowers underneath our solar panels. So nobody has to try to mow the grass. And they also did that planting on the highway that should, this year, we should see wildflowers in the median. So, yeah, so I don't know if you got this in the mail, but um.
Yeah, I think I did.
Did you? I don't, I don't have a big enough yard to have this, but I, I see it all along Wright Street. Yeah, and it's really getting rid of our natural habitat. I don't know, but they'll help you. They're, they're very helpful over there, really. So if anyone wants it.
Uh, I just have one thing. Uh, at our zoning board meeting for the variance the other night, we, we've kind of been having issues with um figuring out the square footage of houses when it comes to. when it comes to accessory structures, as to what you count. Did Jason talk to you about that?
Uh, no.
Okay. And it doesn't, the ordinance doesn't really address if it's just the first floor, second floor, third floor. And, you know, are you looking at just the, the footprint of the house, or the square footage of all of it? 'Cause, you know, if you're just looking at the footprint, if, if you have a little house with this huge garage, like, kinda what we had last couple of times, then if you just count that first floor, you really need big bearings for that.
I, I think it's just this, if you're looking at it from above, it's just the square footage footprint of the building.
It's not clear, though.
Yeah.
So Jason wanted to put it on the agenda so that we could discuss it and come up with something to make it clearer as to what to do and how to figure it out, so I don't know if he didn't remember to put that on the agenda, but.
He had, I'll make a note of it. He had mentioned that there was some discussion. He didn't really allude to what, uh, it was near the end of the day. We were both kinda fried from the, from the day before it, um, so.
Well, he said it could go along with the master plan, because, you know, with these small houses coming up, if you're gonna put a eight-hundred-square-foot house up, then you have a two-thousand-square-foot garage stacked from a brick, so.
We got those.
Didn't this topic come up before, in something that we, we passed on within the last year and a half?
I don't think this specifically was.
Okay.
I don't remember.
I'm just trying to remember.
You know, and then we, then we were discussing, is, is your attached garage considered living space or storage space? And is your basement, if you're just using it for storage, is that living space, or is it storage space? So, you know, there was a lot to consider, and, you know, what we were talking about doing was to have, when they come up for variance next time, is to have the square footage on each floor of living space, if we're gonna count all of that. So like, you know, how much living space, or is there not just storage space?
Don't they have to be certain requirements to be living space? You can't count their basement as living space unless it has a window. Um, what are those? Egress window? I mean, they have to have all that.
Not necessarily, according to Jason.
It's not living, it's not livable space.
That would have to be cured up.
Oh, boy, yeah, really.
It doesn't really say in, in the ordinance, so that's what we have to look at.
That's important, yeah. That'll come up with those accessory dwellings. You know, that's gonna be a big to do.
I think, I think you have to have egress-sized windows, window wells, to have that be a livable space, to put a bedroom down there or something like that, because you have to, it's literally, you have to have like, I don't know how many square foot exit to get out, by code.
Bedrooms.
Or, well, a, a, a living space. I mean, I suppose you could go downstairs, if you call a woodshop a living space. But I don't think, if you ask the realtor, what's the square footage of your usable, you know, if you don't have a walkout basement or something like that, they don't consider that square footage of a home. The square footage of a home is not a basement.
He said, according to the assessors, if it's finished, then it's living space.
Excellent. Always, you're paying tax, give the max.
That's how I've, that's how I've understood it.
If it's finished? Without an egress window, that would be a really a problem, compared to.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, you need it written down.
How many places have, you know, windows to get in and out of there, but still have bedrooms down there, or workroom, or, you know, whatever, which is considered living space, according to the assessors, so.
Well, good, good thing to delve into, right?
Mm-hmm. So, yep. That's all I have, so you need your.
Okay, thank you.